All right, welcome back, everybody. I'm still going to state the statement again, though. Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. We did have a meeting earlier, we did the President's Pledge of Allegiance, so we're going to go on to the next agenda item, and that's going to be Citizens Input. Do you have one person? Just state your name and your address.
Yep, hi, John Mahoney, 41 Putnam Road. Given the limited time of tonight's meeting, I'm going to keep it as brief as I can. So I'm hoping to work with the board on three items for this year's annual town meeting. One, the first thing is that a number of committees around Massachusetts have adopted some kind of sidewalk and bikes or pathways advisory committees. I think one of the things that's missing in Foxborough is some advocacy to continue examining the issues and bringing the issues in front of both this board, other boards, and the town meeting. There's quite a few different ways this could be done, but it's something at a future meeting, I hope I can talk to you in more detail. The second item is there's a possibility of some sort of pathway in Foxborough from the Town Center to Gillette Stadium, Patriot Place. Paige Duncan has done some work on this in past years. I think the craft organization is receptive to working on this, and I know there's demand for people to get by foot to Gillette Stadium, so much so that people are cutting down fences, I understand, to get across the MBTA trackways, and I think giving it a full examination by the town would be appropriate for the future. And the last thing is the Walnut Street Housing Project. There is funding to redesign the intersection of Route 140 and Walnut. There will be 200 new housing units there, and those seniors will be left on an island there by themselves without anywhere to go by foot. So I didn't bring any materials, I didn't give the full details. Given five minutes, that's what I'd like to work with you guys on for a town meeting next year.
Okay, we really can't have a discussion, per se?
Right, right.
You did see here our earlier discussion, a little bit on sidewalks with the meeting we had beforehand, and yeah, let's work together.
Okay.
So I think it might be better, you know, starting with a committee member, and then maybe getting on the agenda and going forward from there.
Yeah, so if anyone in particular on the board would like to work with me, hash this out, see if it's something that's appropriate for the board to bring to town meeting, or if it's something that's better as a citizen petition, I'd like to work on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And just so you know, the sidewalk trail from the center to the stadium, there was an EDC, an Economic Development Committee Subcommittee on that, so I definitely think it's worth connecting with the Economic Development Committee as well. So we can figure that out, but just to kind of let you know.
Yeah, so I don't know if there is or isn't something currently, but I think it's something, you know, the town should be able to determine if it's possible to do or not.
Great, thank you, thank you for your input. All right, we have a public hearing altercation of premises application.
All right. And we've determined that we don't need to read the whole public hearing like we used to still, or just open it?
We can waive the reading of the...
Okay.
Do we have to move to waive the reading?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so motion to open the public hearing, waiving the public hearing notice reading.
Second.
Hello, any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, all right, here we go.
Hello, everyone, nice to see you all again. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom Miller from McDermott Quilltean Miller in Boston, on behalf of Quincy Amusements.
Oh, wait a minute.
Microphones.
Pull the microphone a little closer to you. There we go.
Hello again. Tom Miller from McDermott Quilltean Miller in Boston, on behalf of Quincy Amusements, the licensee doing business as Showcase Cinemas in Patriot Place. I'm joined by Julie Heinzelman, Assistant General Counsel for the licensee, and Allison Machado, sorry. For some reason, that didn't stick in my head. The general manager and manager of record for the licensee. We're here, as was stated, on an alteration of premise for this location. They've opened and operated since 2008 successfully here without incident, as the board, I'm sure, is aware. The proposal tonight is to allow for consumption of alcohol in all 14 of the existing auditorium in the space, and minor alterations to the existing Studio 3 bar to allow for walk-up service for those customers wanting to take a drink in with them. Currently, the alcohol can only be consumed at the Studio 3 bar and on the Lux Level of the... I forgot there was a presentation, so anyway. It's been one of those weeks, renewal season's always tough, and my brain hasn't recovered yet. So currently, the Lux Level Lounge and Studio 3 are the only two places where alcohol can be consumed, sold and consumed on the premise. The only work here, so this is related to the Studio 3 bar. This is as it, on the ground level, this is as it currently exists. And the proposal here is to remove about six feet of space and three seats to allow for better walk-up service. One too many. To allow for walk-up service for customers who want to take a drink in with them into the movie theater. While they enjoy the movie, they can enjoy a drink with it. The licensee has eight other locations in Massachusetts and others beyond Massachusetts that currently operate this model, and they've done so without incident during that, you know, since they've been doing it. They take the responsibility of selling alcohol and supervising those who buy it seriously, and they have robust policies in place to prevent the diversion of alcohol and prevent the service to intoxicated individuals. Just a brief hit on some of them. Here, the service is going to take place in the existing locations. There's no change to the service to where you can buy a drink. Drinks aren't going to be available at the concession stands. They're not going to be available anywhere else. It is, you have to go to the bar, you have to go to the Lux Level. That's, those are the only options. As you can see, ID scanners are in place, everyone gets IDed. Pigeons can only buy one drink at a time, and those drinks are served in a unique glass for alcoholic beverages, by glass container for alcoholic beverages. So everybody knows what is alcohol and what isn't. All staff, management, who are supervising or selling or serving alcohol are tips trained, that's a requirement of the board here, anyway. All the auditoriums are monitored, not only to ensure the quality of the movie-going experience for all patrons, but to ensure that there, you know, nobody's intoxicated and there's no handoffs or diversion to minors in the auditorium while the, you know, once the alcohol's been served and sent, you know, into the theaters. And finally, the overall policies are reviewed every shift, morning and evening, with staff by the management. So the policies beyond even what I gave you, the brief overview, are reviewed every day, and the staff goes over that every day with their employees. This is going to allow the Quincy Amusements and the licensee to kind of, to meet the needs that have arisen, especially since COVID, of customers who want to be able to enjoy a movie-going experience with a drink, something they've become accustomed to doing at home. They want to do it here when they go see a movie as well. This will allow them to meet that need and, you know, and continue to operate successfully as they have done for so long here at Patriot Place going forward. And again, I get too into myself talking, and here we go. But, you know, they conduct their own compliance checks in addition to anything the town or the ABCC does. And the rest of it, I kind of went over. As I mentioned, they, even to the level of night vision, monoculars will monitor the movie theaters. And as I already wrapped up, there we go.
Any questions from the board? Yeah, Leah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm not, this is a 266-page application. So I think last when I looked, so just gonna...
Yeah, I apologize for that. The ABCC has been requesting all leasing documents for any alteration. So instead of having it hang up there, I submit them with the application. The majority of the application is about 16 pages?
Yes.
Or, well, the meat of the application is 16 pages, the rest is Brian Early's leasing stuff, so blame Brian.
So just to make it simple, is this going to make the Foxborough location like the North Attleboro location? A lot of us know both locations just because we're local. Does that mean that the seats are going to stay as they are, with the seats that they have in Foxborough, and now alcohol is going to be able to be served? Or is there a larger renovation planned? For me feeling comfortable, is there less seats essentially once there's alcohol service? Will this look like North Attleboro?
So real quickly, this application before you is just to allow everything as-is to take alcoholic beverages into the auditorium. I can't speak to what their plans are for the future, but the application before you is solely for allowing alcoholic beverages to be taken from the existing bar area into the auditorium.
Which is where those seats are that I'm asking about?
Right.
Correct?
Yep.
So am I understanding that right? So the seats will remain as they are?
Nothing is changing outside of those three seats that I showed earlier.
Okay.
And a little bit of bar area to allow walk-up service. Nothing else is changing.
The only physical changes will be to the space by Studio 3, right when you walk in into the lobby to the right. I think, not for 2024, but beyond, is what we're looking for, a larger reseat project. Our hope had been to do everything collectively, but the industry being what it is right now, there's just not room in the CapEx for the full sort of remodel as well.
But is that minimizing the change? Because right now, you can't take a drink into the auditorium. So yes, you're correct, you're taking away three seats, but you're also asking us to allow those drinks to be taken into the auditorium.
I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to minimize that, I'm just, I was attempting to minimize the work.
Okay.
Like the, I was trying, to be clear, there's no overall alteration of the entire premise. There's no work being done anywhere outside of those three seats at the bar and a little bit of wall area.
But it would allow drinks to now go into every auditorium that exists?
Correct, yes, yes. I apologize if I wasn't clear.
No, no, that's okay, it's just I went through it all today and just wanted to make sure that I was understanding it correctly as I went through it.
Yeah, so I haven't been to North Attleboro, but I've been to Legacy Place. Is Foxborough going to replicate Legacy Place at some point? Because that's, you know, much more conducive to bringing drinks into the auditorium, I think, which is Leah's point.
Yeah, like, are there any other theaters that you can bring a drink into the old-school seats, we'll call it?
That's a good question, I'd have to go back and look. Most do have the reseat.
Providence allows it, but, you know, not Massachusetts.
Right.
So I have a question, and it's probably going to sound a little strange to you guys, but we're not big moviegoers, Jimmy hates the movies, right? So I haven't been to the movies up there in years. When you're talking about the auditorium, I think the last time I was up there, so there's an area, and you have to be...
The Lux Level.
Yeah, so you have to be 21 to be up there?
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't, nothing is going to mingle with people who are under 21?
No, it's going to go into the regular theaters now.
As of right now, that Lux Level, you can take alcoholic beverages into the auditorium. That is existing as it currently. But this will allow the other non-Lux Level, so, you know, if I were to go with my daughter to see something that would drain my brain, I can also have a beverage while I, you know, while I watch that with her.
Okay, so the level, right, so right now as it stands, where the alcohol can be is all 21-plus?
Or the bar outside.
Yeah, the way it is now.
Or the restaurant on the lower level.
Okay, so now we're gonna want to bring it to a place where you could have people underage?
The entire building, the entire premise is now...
Like a, you know, like a typical restaurant, or a lot of concert venues, you know, a place where, you know, you can, with your family, at a family, in a family environment, have a drink with your entertainment.
I hate to be a Debbie Downer. I am just envisioning if, you know, if a group of people go out, you know, I'm 20, my friends are 21. I'm wondering what, how are you going to be able to watch? I know you said you can buy, and I'm sure, Chief, are you going to come up and talk at some point? I know he doesn't want to, but...
No, he had his hand up.
Okay, so, well, I'm just envisioning the supervision. Yeah, I'm envisioning, I get it, like, if I go with my kids, I'm going to have a drink, but I'm wondering, in a dark theater, what's the supervision of me not sitting down, passing a drink to Seth, who's only 20, and then I get up and get my, I know it's one drink at a time, so you're not coming back. I'm just, I'm trying to, you know...
Well, I mean, that would be a red flag. One, it is only one drink at a time, but, you know, if you have a group of three or four kids, and you being the adult who wishes to risk, you know, being arrested for serving alcohol to minors.
Yeah.
Wanted, you know, you come up to the bar, you know, three times in five minutes, or every five minutes for 15, 20 minutes, that's going to raise a red flag, and, you know, their staff is well-trained, beyond just basic tip certification, to recognize things like that. And that is also what the monitoring of the theaters is for. With the fun, I can go back because I have a presentation. Oh, maybe I can't. There it is, oh, too far. Never mind, I'm going to stop playing with that.
We saw it quickly.
Yep, yeah, that's, you know, yep, they have a night vision monocular. They, you know, that is what the monitoring of the theaters for, is to prevent that type of, hand off that type of interaction, so.
I mean, honestly, kids these days, I mean, any day, not even these days, when I was a kid, if you have a 21-year-old friend, they're bringing a flask or bringing in a bottle and the jacket, and they're passing it around. So I'm saying, if there's a will, there's a way.
Which they're already trained to, you know, recognize and prevent, and, you know, it's, they're even more incentivized to do that now.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I'm going to have to, I'm sorry, Chief, but I'm going to have to hear from you to convince me that, you know, if you think this is okay...
Chief, you're going to come sit next to me.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go with you, but I'm just imagining, like, someone walks away from one bar, and they could be anywhere, you know, I'm just, I'm just not seeing it, but obviously that's...
Yeah, and does your staffing change? Like, normally, an auditorium's empty. Does your staffing change post this change during movies as well?
Do they, I'm sorry?
Does your staffing in the auditorium change?
Yes.
Okay.
Stephanie, you do know I do love to talk, so I don't know how I got, I didn't want to talk. So this proposal, it's not the first time I saw it. As we know, the movie theater is kind of like a staple in our community. Ever since we lost the one of Ton, then we lost the one in Sharon, it's really become a place where families go, kids go, mom and dad go to get away from kids, get a break. And it really has been one of the best-run movie theaters in this area. The S-1 district allows us, under the regulations, the police department, absolute strict control, including mandating police officers if needed based on the number of people and occupants within the building. Obviously, the capacity, I don't know it offhand, but it is substantial if you were to take all the movie theaters and put it together. So at first, it sounds a little odd to me, mixing a Bud Light or whatever alcohol with a pack of Twizzlers is not ideal. But I don't, but I've also been there, trying to eat dinner, and then all of a sudden, you get two minutes to get to your movie theater, and, you know, can I get this to go? And you can't bring your, you can't bring your meal. I don't see this as being the goal of the movie theater. I don't see it as it being, let's go to the movie theater and go get drunk. Post-COVID really changed the seating arrangements at the movie theater. It was always like, oh my God, buy the tickets, we're going to get there 45 minutes early, we're never going to get a seat. All the seats now, within the movie theater, have, you reserve your seat, your seat is set, you can time your arrival, you can sit down and relax. I don't foresee this as overwhelming the culture and the business model that's in place. I will say movie theaters are struggling post-COVID. This is one of our business partners. All the streaming venues are probably essentially killing the movie theater business in some ways, and this is their opportunity to maybe entice more people to go to the movie theater. If we have situations, we have calls for service, we can address it when you go into the movie theater. Many people, when you walk in, you buy your ticket, you have contact. If you're going upstairs, you have contact. If you're going to the bar, you're going to have contact. You got to show your ticket, you have contact. You're going to a, one of the registers, you have contact. And they have ushers that go throughout the whole movie theater at all times. I don't know if anybody's been in the movie theater. Stephanie, I love movies, honestly, it's like, if you have an unruly patron, someone's leaving, someone's going to go get guest services to go deal with that. We almost have none of that up there, at least to the level where the law enforcement is needed. So this is something we can monitor, this is something we can kind of regulate if needed. I'm not going to talk construction, but the way those, the construction of the seats and their angles, I don't foresee all the seats coming out and changing without a lot of work and a lot of cost. I don't think that's what we're looking for. My only reservation in all of this is now we have a venue that, I don't know the max capacity of that entire venue, but it now is a big destination place collectively, and it may give options down the road if we were, as a full liquor license. But I think that's something that we do as the town, to work with business partners as they grow and as they have vision, and I think, and I support it.
Yeah, that's all I need.
Correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't the Orpheum, you can get a glass of wine and go sit and watch the...
Yes.
Yeah, so, or a beer.
All right, good. So, and just a quick question, so would the responsibility, if that were to happen, if someone, if someone takes a beverage and passes it off, responsibility then becomes on that person and not the establishment? If there's underage drinking?
Both.
Both, within regulation, like, within reason. There's that reasonable enforcement of what did the business do their best to adhere to the guidelines set forth, both through the ABCC and the town regulation? If someone wants to take it, just like if they go to Six Strings at 6 o'clock or 8 o'clock at night, where it's still under 21, or, you know, by Louis. That could happen, I guess we could, if, anything to death, but I don't foresee it as a trend. I assume if it becomes a trend, that mitigation would come into place within the license holders, because it's their license, and they don't want to lose it, so.
Good enough for me.
All right, great.
And we have the fire chief here, no concerns?
No, we do the annual inspection with the building commissioner as part of their local license, so we have no issues there.
You know, the environment's different, too, in a theater, as opposed to like going to the stadium, where you could say the same things can happen at the stadium, but the environment's different, so patrons are not going to tolerate underage drinking in that environment.
Absolutely not, they're absolutely not. You can't even stand it when someone's laughing. They have the rules, please be quiet, turn your cell phones off. And I do want the board to know, like, we're not rookies at a business trying to be creative. We're kind of like the model throughout the whole state of how to manage these large venues, all these alcohol establishments, and we do it very well. So I'm pretty confident we can take care of this modification, and we'll monitor it and work with the team and move forward.
Right, let's, good.
Seth, you go in first?
Good.
All right, it is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Before we close the public hearing.
Any word from the public? All right.
All right, so motion to close the public hearing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi. All right, so motion to approve the alteration to premises application for Quincy Amusements Doing Business as Showcase Cinemas Deluxe, 24 Patriot Place.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
And who doesn't want a beer watching Minions 3?
Who doesn't need one?
That's another question.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thanks, Chief. Let's see, next on the agenda, bench policy. Are we ready to...
Nothing, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bench policy?
Yes, so I have a bench policy, revised it based on some questions brought up last week, which had to do with the process by which other committees, such as recreation, conservation, and historical, would get involved in the process. I overcomplicated it, Leah helped me bring it back to simplified. Sometimes you just look at these things and work on them, and it's just too much. So I think we've reached a place where the process is clear, and we have customers waiting in the wings to apply for benches. So I'm hoping, we did also update the Attachment A to relabel the spec from Common Bench to Uptown Bench specification. Then we have an application form to go with it. So I think, I'm hoping you all will approve this tonight, and we can get this on the streets. And then as part of the approval, I was, I asked Katie to add to the motion is just to open up the call for applicants for the Common benches. You know, we can't guarantee the exact timing, we're going into winter, but I know Chris is, you know, we've all met with facilities, with Chris, we have a quasi-plan, Marie, we've all talked about how we'll handle it. And there's work to be done, you know, the concrete needs to be removed, so we're not making any promises right now, but we do know that there are many people waiting to get their name, well, I shouldn't say many. There's a couple people waiting to get their names in. I don't want to create too much of a rush to get their names in for consideration. And that would be a process that, you know, we'll wait and see, but I suggest you open it up, and maybe we revisit it, you know, see how many we get between now and, I don't know, the end of February or something to that effect, or even the end of January, whatever you see fit is how, before you close it out, and see, you know, whether you have five applications or whether you have 50. And do we want to open it for just the Common or anywhere else uptown? Well, I think just, I think Uptown's always open. Okay. I think the Common is, we know we have 21 sites, and we have a couple we want to keep. And so it's a matter of getting to that point to figure out who's going uptown, who's going on the Common and who isn't. I think other locations, as, you know, deemed eligible by the, by DPW, can always be considered. We have a couple benches already going in, you know, through, over by the Steamer Shed and on Central Street already, and we know those are planned, so.
And it's a policy, so if we find we need to revise it a little bit, you know, we certainly can. Any questions? I thought it was great.
I've looked at this till I'm cross-eyed on this one.
All right.
I'm just curious about the, so I mentioned it last time, town manager approval off of the Common. Is that what people want?
Yeah, there's a lot of oversight by, like, the commissions, and, you know, there's other layers of oversight as well.
I mean, it...
It's only mostly because it's consistent with the Common and like sort of the public use process, you know, when you, when anything's being done on town property on the Common, it's you all, and anything else that's off the Common is the town manager. So it was just made to be consistent with that approach.
Okay, so let's say the town manager receives an application and rejects it, for whatever reason. Is the applicant, do they have recourse, or is it, is it a...
Now you bring this up. We could always look at another location, I mean, I would think we'd... Yeah, well, go to DPW.
I brought it up last time, it's the same point I made last time.
Yeah, okay. It would go to DPW first, and then they, so Chris would actually have more say, I think, than the town. Like, I think the town manager, any town manager that's in the seat is probably going to say, hey, DPW director, what do you think about that location? So it's, it's not just one person, and then it would be the town manager approving it.
I just, it makes sense to me that the Select Board would approve as appointed or elected officials that have actually live in the town and probably have a better sense of who did what, and for when, and for how long. But otherwise, you know, that's the only thing that I noticed before, and I'm calling it out again.
Leave that up to you folks. I'm okay with it as-is. I understand, I hear that, but I think worse, we have more benches, I mean...
Fine.
Yeah, I think, I think the layers with the other commissions, recreation, having to approve their locations, conservation on theirs, I think this is a very limited, I mean, we're talking like the Steamer Shed, and I don't even know how many benches we can fit in those spots, so I'm okay with it, with it as-is.
So is the town manager approving the, where the bench is going?
No, who gets to be on it?
Oh, who gets to be, oh, okay.
Yea or nay if Joe Foxborough wants to be on a bench?
I don't know, I kind of like the idea that, like Seth said, that we would, we would make that determination. I mean, I'm not hell-bent on it, but, you know. Yeah, I kind of like, I kind of like what you're saying. But, you know, whatever you guys...
Honestly, I don't care. I mean, in the sense, I mean that in, if it wants to live with you guys.
I'm not going to die, I'm not going to jump on the sword or whatever it is.
Nor am I, that's...
It makes more sense to me that the Select Board...
I think we still have the Common, and I don't want to bottleneck the process either.
Well, how much, how many benches and trees are we talking about?
Yeah, I can just imagine the board not agreeing...
Yeah, I can just imagine the board not agreeing. I mean, I don't, I don't think that that would happen, but...
It's three, isn't it?
Well, we have three today. I mean, we know we want to go on there, but, you know, you could end up with one over on Railroad, or you could end up with one, you know, over near South Street, or, you know, so we don't know, I mean, that's...
And if they have to wait two weeks, I mean, presumably that's, you know, it's a name on a bench, so I don't think it's mission critical to have it, but what, you know, again.
Yeah, well, you know...
It makes more sense to me, but I'm, either way.
The, the one thing, I was okay, and then when you just kind of said, you know, as far as, I mean, obviously, whoever's sitting at this table will always be a resident. You know, you know, any other position, you know, could be, couldn't be. I mean, it kind of, kind of sounds like it might be something that, that we, you know, I mean, it's kind, I know they're paying, I know they're paying for it, but it's kind of, it's kind of a big deal that people are going to get to. It's a great idea, and I think it's a kind of a big deal to, to, so, I don't know, I kind of...
And there was no real process before, so if anything, we're even adding a layer with what we're doing. So I can go either way on it, I just want to wrap it up.
All right, what about this, and so on C2, it says, "The select board has the authority to approve proposed locations for memorial benches, trees, and plaques on town property after input received pursuant to D2 and D5 of this policy. The select board is responsible for approving locations on the town common, but shall seek input from the historical commission," something like that. And then I might have to change it a little to reference conservation and rec, but something to that effect.
Yeah.
Would that make you, uh?
Yeah, that's fine.
So we can approve it with...
As amended.
As amended.
I can actually probably just delete that whole last line and just leave it as that one sentence, because D2 to D5 is actually, let me just see, D2 to D5, it references historical conservation. And, so yeah, so I think what I would just say is, "The select board has the authority to approve proposed locations for memorial benches on town property after input received from D2, D5 of this policy," and just leave it at that. Because the D2 and D5 call out rec, historical, and conservation.
So they would still weigh in on it?
Yes.
Like, I think that they should, they're more of the governing factor than us on those lands.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, because D, with D3 says, the, shall, the DPW shall forward to the town manager's office, land use department, recreation, conservation, historical. These boards or commissions may require a meeting to discuss. And then for recreation, conservation, the respective committees shall include a recommendation on their approved location and type of bench, so, cover that.
Are you, are you guys, I'm like Seth, like, I wouldn't jump on a sword either, but are you, would...
If that would make you guys happy, I'm happy with it. I, like I said...
Thrilled.
The only reason I liked it the way it was is because it was already vetted before it got to the town manager. But if you, um, let's do it with the, more work for us, let's go.
Okay. So motion to approve the town memorial bench and tree policy, you can't fit trees, as amended, and open the application period for benches on the town common.
Second.
All righty, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right.
All right. All right, let me get out of here.
Yeah, Pason Road, back to page again.
Okay, I know, this is my meeting tonight. All right, so I actually have, I'm going to have to go off mic for a second, filibuster. We're doing it the old-fashioned way tonight. Hopefully Mr. Beck could see these. See which one's the best one.
I know, but I like those billboards for sure.
Those are cool up there.
We might have to turn it a little bit.
I can see it.
Yeah, I don't think the people at home can, if you turn it a little bit.
I mean, it's not, they're not going to get a lot out of that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think they are either.
Oh, wait a minute, Mr. Beck says it's okay.
Got it?
Yeah, see, look at that, you can see it.
Oh, that's good, look at him.
Yeah, great job, Mr. B. There you go.
He can see that really well.
Yeah.
So I'm here, well, I'm already here, but I'm here tonight to discuss the possibility of completing the Old State Hospital site. This has been something that's been kind of bandied about for a little while, and we, we have this vacant auditorium building. And as the Director of Land Use and Economic Development, I can't tell you how many people who have come to me tour, wanting to tour that building, and have grand hopes for a brew pub, or a doctor's office, or this or that, and then they walk through the building, and I never see them again. So this property was brought to the Asset Review Committee, Seth's a member of that, and we discussed it last year, I believe, and looked at it, and basically the decision was made to have an architectural evaluation of the system so that the town could figure out exactly what is the status of that building. There's a lot of people in the community that love the aesthetic of it, hate the idea of losing another old brick building, but what were the realities we were facing? So we did have Castle Boo, a local architect, take a look at the building and learned that the building is lucky it's still standing. It has no systems, it's structurally not sound, the roof is, you know, it could start to collapse at any time. It really is a liability, and it's, it's getting close to the point where it might be beyond repair. Knowing that, and the cost would be in the millions of dollars, oh, I tried to pawn it off on a possible community center, and I thought it would be fabulous, but again, the realities of just, it would be actually less expensive if there were to be a community center to start with a blank site than there would be to deal with that old building. So unfortunately, that, I couldn't sell that. So then the next, so then I got a quote for demolishing the building. It would be about $500,000 to demolish the building. We had spoken to, to some folks looking into whether there could ever be some redevelopment of that site. Then there was pushback. The Recreation Commission was concerned, because the way the deed's written for the auditorium, it mentions that it shall be used for recreational use. When we started kicking around the idea of maybe seeing this site redeveloped, possibly with some housing, because let's be real, unless somebody makes money on that building, it's just going to be torn down. And, you know, the town's going to pay half a million dollars to do it. So, but there was some pushback from recreation for good reasons. They were concerned about losing an asset. But then once, you know, we pointed out that really the only alternative right now is to tear the building down, through discussions, it was said, "Well, we don't want more apartments." And I, I heard that, so I said, "Well, what about condominiums, you know, ownership units?" And so I did go to the Recreation Commission and showed them the same plan and discussed with them the option. We came up with some ideas of what they would like, so let me just give you the lowdown of the proposal. The idea would be, we would have to go out for bid, there would be a open procurement process. The existing, with the condition that the existing auditorium remain. The concept would be that it would likely be developed into 10 condominium units. The, the way I've heard it, and again, it's all dependent on the final developer, but one concept was thrown out is that the two, the ends would be townhouses, and then the middle units would be two-story flats, there'd be six two-story flats inside, so two, on the bottom and top. We discussed the idea of requiring that it be open, right of first refusal for Foxborough residents. So for six months, the Foxborough residents would have the right to purchase it. And this would be all things we put in the condition. Behind that, on the old T Building site, the tuberculosis building, which locals will know, I don't know what that means, you know, but there's a, a site behind the auditorium, there would be a proposed 80-plus or minus, maybe 84-unit assisted living facility. The benefit to that is, people have told me that here in Foxborough, there is no place to sort of end. You know, the Doolittle Home is wonderful, but it's small, and I think there's some limitations with respect to how many people can live there. So folks have said, "Oh, we'd love to have an assisted living facility in town." And in fact, the original plan for the, for the state hospital included assisted living, because the whole plan was to have it be where you could move into your first apartment there, buy a condo, buy a house, buy a bigger house, and then start to scale back and end up in assisted living. So this would complete that campus. Also, the recreation had asked for community garden. They've, for years, have wanted to get a community garden back in place. So it would be a community garden with $10,000 a year towards the upkeep and maintenance of that, plus a little shed and water, so that the folks, you know, the residents who use the community gardens would have ease of use, and it would be easy to maintain. And then a dog exercise area near the, near the gardens. So that's kind of the idea out there. In the memo I provided, there are some financial benefits to something like this, and I had to put forward a couple scenarios, because we do have to go through open procurement. But one of the extreme benefits would be is if the, if the connection to sewer was through Chestnut Green, and that resulted in the Chestnut Green Condominium Association tying into Town Sewer. They have already gotten permission from town meeting to do so, and I believe they want to. But the problem with that in, in Foxborough is that in order to tie into sewer, you have to buy your capacity. It's a large price tag. So if you look at the memo I provided, it's a lot of money, let me see if I could find it. It is $1.7 million in sewer connection fees for Chestnut Green alone. The, the connection fees for the auditorium insisted living would be closer to $600,000. So we can't assume that it's definitely going to be the Chestnut Green, but the cost, we, we do think that it's quite likely, because the cost of running sewer all the way from Baker up to that site would likely be prohibitive, whereas it is available in Chestnut Green, so if there was a connection made through there, it'd be a lot less expensive. So there's tremendous financial benefits. It's more so, the benefits, the back page there is, if, if the connection is made through Chestnut Green, the benefits could be in the range of $4 million, financial benefits. But the connections to traditional Town Sewer would still be over $1 million, so either way, it's nothing to sneeze at. We just have to make sure we go through appropriate procurement to do it. Chris is here, so he could, if there were any questions, but the other thing, I've got in a crash course in sewer, is that out there on Baker Street, there is a lift station that needs to be replaced. And I know, what, a year ago it was $1 million, it's probably more than that now, because everything is. So for $1 million, we need, the town is on the hook at this point to upgrade the lift, lift station soon. If Chestnut Green ties in, then there would be no need to upgrade that lift station. They can use the, the equipment or the facility for Chestnut Green, and it would save over $1 million. So that's part of that $4 million savings. Additionally, the sewer would be then going by the Public Safety Building. Presently, they need to pump their underground storage tanks, so that would be a beneficial for them, for them as well, and for the town to not have to handle that. So, we did run this by, as I said, Recreation voted to support this concept, and we also met with Bill Yukna, because we heard he had been concerned. His concern was as the man, as a town building committee representative, because of the Public Safety Building. He didn't want, he wanted to make sure that the Public Safety Building wasn't cornered in. So we did make some slight modifications to the property line and, and the sort of the parking allocation to address that, and he did give us a sign-off on that, that he was, you know, he had no more concerns based on that. So this will be a huge lift if it's going to happen. The thought is, is that we would go to town meeting in May with some zoning to allow this, and possibly for the, to allow, to give the select board the right to dispose. After that, we then need to get DCAM and the legislature to sign off on it. Now, we did have a meeting with DCAM, and we thought they might be hard. We sat in this room, and the state rep and state, state senator helped us do it. We met with them, and they embraced the project. We couldn't believe it. They're like, "Do you want us to help you write the legislation?" Okay, so they're working with us, we've had two meetings with them already. It's actually quite favorable, we're shocked. They don't want it back, we didn't know if they were going to try to take it back. They don't want it, for obvious reasons, and so then at that...
Folks at home, can you just, DCAM is who?
Oh, I'm sorry, Division of Capital Asset Management. So it's the state entity that manages their real estate. And there, in our deed, it does say that if we don't use the property, they, the state can take it back. So that's why they kind of have a right to take it back, but they don't want to, and they're supportive of this concept, at least, you know, in our first two meetings, we were really thrilled.
And when we go forward with the project, we got to get approval through the legislature.
Correct.
As we did with Chestnut Green and...
Correct.
Years ago.
Yes, so we'd need that, so we need zoning, we need DCAM, we need legislature, we need procurement. Vote to dispose. We might need to revise the master plan for the state hospital project, because it does mention 203 housing units, and we want to make sure we don't want to follow that. So there's no clear process of how to do that, but we thought town meeting or planning board would take a look at that. So yeah, there are a lot of steps, but I wanted to bring this board up to speed with it and let you know the direction we may head. If we, you know, if you aren't in support of it, probably just shelve it too, because we're really not looking for big fights on town meeting floor. It's going to take a lot to get this approved, we think. But, you know, having Recreation behind it, having Bill Yukna behind it, having the planning board behind it, and we do think, EDC's behind it, I believe, I, I think I talked to them about it a while ago, it was a long time ago, so I'm sketchy on that, but. Town Asset Review, I think, I haven't brought it, this to them, but they've seen, they haven't seen this iteration, but they've seen this concept, and, and we've given them the whole brief, in fact, Chris gave them the whole sewer talk. So I guess, questions, comments, concerns?
It's going to be a long process, so might as well kick it off.
Sounds good.
Right, but a great project.
Yeah.
You know, we've, we've done a lot of other projects that have taken a long time, and it's worked out good, so. Do you need a vote from us? And I apologize, were you going to say something?
No, no, I mean, I'm sort of in the butter to this area, so that is becoming increasingly an eyesore, you know, as you, as you walk down. And just to bring it up, I, I think across the street is an eyesore now, where we had the pop-up brewery.
Yes.
If you drive by there, so that whole area really needs an upgrade, because it's really unsightly, really. And everything else around it is very nice, you know, you got these two things that I think need to be dealt with, so I, I think it's a great idea.
I had a question about order of operations. So this plan here was, a developer helped us build this out, flesh it out. We have, there's multiple steps, including going to town meeting to approve the zoning. The DCA MM, DCAM, needs to, for whatever reason, they need to approve it. I don't know why, we don't have to get into it, but, so is the land and property sold? And then we dictate to the new property owner what they need to build?
Yes, we would put out a procurement document that basically authorizes the town to sell it, but under the following conditions.
So like the fire station?
Yes, like the fire station. You'd basically be, and maybe even a little more so, because we allowed them to come in and tell us. I think on this one, we'd be even more prescriptive, where we'd be saying, this is, you know, in the back, we don't want a part, you know, the 84 units of assisted living? Assisted living, not senior housing, not this, not apartments, you know, assisted living. And then, you know, 10 condos, 10 condos, like, I think we'd be telling the program and looking for the developers to come to the table with that.
And so they're required by law to build exactly what they're told before they buy the property?
Yeah, that would be part of the, the transaction. Don't apply, yeah. They, I mean, if they're not interested in doing it, they, they won't buy the land.
Okay, I, I hate that this is even going to come out of my mouth, but it would, I mean, everyone here will know. There was a lot of issues with the dog park.
It's not a dog park, it's a dog exercise area. It's a dog exercise area.
Says dog park, right, you said dog exercise area, it says dog park right there. So here, so here's the thing, I'm not saying I don't support them, I have a dog, I love dogs. It was a huge issue in town.
It's going to be near housing.
But the issue was where it was.
Well, this is going to be with, right near housing, too.
They'll know, they'll know that they're...
Yeah, a lot of it's new, a lot of it's public safety building, a lot of it's different than...
I was told 60% of the people in the condos will likely have a dog.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that I don't...
I got to get rid of that plan, it says, I think the one up there says dog exercise area. That's the wrong plan.
No, I, I have a dog, I, you know, but, but there was a lot of issues.
But that was because they clocked it into an area next to a, right, and, and a community. This is going to be an exercise area right from the beginning.
All I'm saying, you better have a Plan B that does not say dog park, because that, that, I'm just saying.
Yep.
That, you're going to go to town meeting for a vote, so that's all I would say.
Do you need a vote from us?
I do not. I think I just wanted to make sure that you're on board, and we're going to move forward with zoning in the spring.
Yeah, a couple of nods, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. All right, take a sip of water, you're up next.
Okay, so the next thing is the flag policy. This came up, Leah went to a... Okay. So the next thing is the flag policy. This came up. Leah went to a seminar, I think, at MMA last January, and had hoped to get something going on this, and it stalled out. So this is a very simple flag policy that talks about the use of what types of flags can be displayed on town property and basically on flag poles. So it basically restricts it to the American flag and federal, state, and local flags. So not, you know, statement flags, not political, whatever. It's sort of gives the town the, the clear direction that the, the town-owned flag poles will be used for these sort of federal, state, local flags only.
And this was definitely an area of weakness I saw at MMA that a lot, this was a big topic. And we didn't have a policy, and other towns were caught not having a policy and, you know, not having clear direction where I think-
And it was vetted through town council.
It was. It was, it went through town council and the Veterans Agent.
Yeah, okay, that's-
Yeah. Because what else do we, I mean, I know we flew a Patriots flag on game days at one point. Was there anything else that we, that we did flew? I know there was a lot of people that were happy with that.
Yeah, but other organizations could come and say, I would like to fly a flag on the town, on the town common, on the, outside of town hall. And we did kind of muddle our way through it. Someone had requested, and we ended up, you know, doing it ceremony out there, maybe in the early spring. But it came up again then, and I, it's come up a couple times, and I think it's something we need to clean up.
Yeah. Well, I mean, listen, if we wanted to do something, like the Patriots ever make it back to the Super Bowl again or anything like that, because we have all kinds of things on the common, like to, just to temporarily hang a banner and put it down.
And it is, I like this policy because it addresses sports flags, actually. So I feel like we've covered it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought you all, because I remember the sports flag pol, controversy. I thought there was a flag policy as a result of that. So I was surprised there-
Yeah, we actually voted on one in 2019 when I went back and left the meeting, on a policy for the flags that go around the common. So we have like a whole process on that, but not anything for the flag poles.
Uh, any further, Seth, anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
All right. So motion to approve the town flag policy.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Town manager search, just a couple of date updates. The next meeting for the search committee is December 11th at noon in the Fuller Conference Room at the Boyden Library. We're going to have a short meeting on January 3rd when we get the announcement of who the ones coming forward to us will be. And then we'll start our interviews on January 10th and 11th. Sorry, gave you a two-minute break. Now it's a-
Oh, that's me again.
Acting town manager.
Okay, I got to find my report. Here it is.
Can we get just maybe calendar invites on those, too, just to make sure?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, here we go.
We might already have them if we are-
All right. So up on the screen, we have here pictures of the billboards that are presently up and running on Route 1 to congratulate the Foxborough Warriors for their state championship. They won the Super Bowl. I'm sure everybody knows that. We have, we, Katie's been working very hard on billboards. And in fact, there's another billboard going to be running this week for our, the Army, the Foxborough Army-Navy support. So it's kind of cool. So we're going to have some billboards up this week, when we're going to have the most number of people up on Route 1, you know, going to Army-Navy. Announcement was made, I believe it was, I don't know if it was yesterday or the day before, that Wednesday, August 21st, Pink is coming to concert at the stadium. That brings our concert total up to nine for right now. So we were told that it might be quiet now until February, so we don't know if we'll hear any more announcements. But that's, you know, quite a few to kick off the season. The Patriots-Kansas City football game was originally scheduled for Monday Night Football. It's been flexed from December 18th, Monday night, to 1:00 PM on December 17th. I did check with Public Safety, Leah, and they were thrilled. Sunday is better than Mon, Sunday is way better than a Monday night. So they were, they were happy. And they knew that it was on the radar screen. I think everybody's probably heard by now that the Army-Navy game is being played Saturday. Public Safety, I can't tell you how hard, and Doc, you, you can attest to this, the police and fire have been working 24/7 on this effort. They're in those meetings and in doing things all the time up there. So it's, it really is, and I know, Doc, you kind of wanted to acknowledge this, it really is overwhelming and astounding to look at how much work that stadium brings to our public safety team. And they make it look easy, and they're always casual about it. But it's, it's another full-time job, so.
And that's why hearing about that flex game, like, just, I'm sure even staff at the stadium, I mean, for everyone, like, the Army-Navy game so much, and then to have to flex, just to truly appreciate everything that probably even just went into that extra step, you know, so.
Yeah. Chief Grace and his staff, you know, Chief Grace already mentioned to me, they're going to be at the stadium at 5:00 in the morning, and he doesn't foresee leaving till at least 10:00 at night. That's a long freaking day for public safety.
And they're in meetings and, and, you know, tabletops and, and, you know, prep meetings and exercises all the way up to it. So, and it doesn't only happen on December 9th. I should also mention that our rec department and Katie have been working really hard as well, because there's a few other events going on, events leading up to the big game. So residents can get involved on December 8th around 1:00 PM, when we're going to be welcoming the West Point Marathon Team as they run the official game ball to the stadium. Roads will not be closed, and, but the police will be escorting for them for the entire route. There's going to be a gathering on the town common to celebrate. And we're the 24th stop on their run. Katie's got a map on social media. So join in for that. The Navy's going to be early in the morning. I just saw on social media that they're coming through Rentham. So that's an early morning. Check out Rentham Police Department's website, Facebook posts for information on if you want to go cheer on Navy, if you're a Navy person. The big breaking news from today is that on Friday, December 8th, the day before the game, from 10:30 to 2:30, there's going to be three Army helicopters flying into town. It's the big ones with the double rotors. So secure your windows. And they're going to land at the Booth Field. So the public is welcome. This time, you know, everybody was jealous of the high school kids that got to see them. Now the public is welcome. So it's going to be, there's going to be a lot going on between the running by on South Street. And there, there's going to be a lot going on as we get ready for the game. Last week, we did, was it just last week? We just had the MBTA Communities meeting.
Yeah.
Just as a recap, if anybody from home wants to check it out, check out Foxborough Cable Access's YouTube channel because it is on demand. But we will be moving forward with the zoning for that this spring. I did talk to Dan Krantz from the Craft Group after the meeting, and just recommended that he go to the planning board meeting. I think we'll be talking about it. I'll be going into the planning board in January. I don't know if it's January 4th or January 25th or both, to start some work sessions around just, you know, getting this, moving this forward. So Barney and I were planning on, with Gabby, going into the planning board, I think both of those nights, but definitely one of them to move this on. And I suggested Dan just come in and talk to the board, that we have our proposal. And obviously, the Craft Group is welcome to possibly their proposal. But for right now, you know, I don't think our interests align. So we're not, you know, we have to do what's right for the community. Back to the, the newcomers, as Bill Yuchna called them, the migrant and transitional housing. 130 of the eligible migrants were bused to Newton a week or so ago to fill out federal work authorization forms. So that's a positive, that they might be able to work. And we all know that there's a need to fill in certain jobs around the area, so that would be good. And the latest update I got is that there are 292 people living up there within 80 families. So that's where we're at now. From a human resources update, I mentioned it last week, but for those who didn't see it, Gabriella Jordan, or as we affectionately call her, Gabby, from the Planning Department, we're recognizing her for 20 years of service. So that's a huge accomplishment. And we do have current open positions for the Communications Director, and still the Board of Health, Health Inspector, having a heck of a time. Been interviewing, but no, no jobs filled. The Foxborough Police Department was awarded the Edward J. Byrne Justice Assistant Grant for $44,500 to help ensure that Foxborough remains safe and thriving. They can use the grant on projects such as unlawful drug use, domestic violence, sexual assault, and hate crimes. But it also can be used for technology, investigative tools, protective gear, and school safety and security. So congratulations to them. Another big news is that the Board of Health is doing a comprehensive, or hoping to do a comprehensive update of their regulations. So if you go to their website, you'll see they have a comment, a draft open for comment. It's not even to hearings. So this is the time, if you have any thoughts or any consideration about any Board of Health regulations, now's the time to review and comment, because they'll soon be getting to a point where they're, you know, they're going to public hearing on them. But they are seeking public input now. And I know Matt would very much like-
There's a QR code in the lobby, too, right there.
There is a QR code, yes. So. Construction updates. So South Street and Cedar Street, Raw Water Main, Sprague Road to Witch Pond. So the Raw Water Main from Witch Pond to Town Line has now reached Taylor Road intersection with Cedar Street. So they're moving along. And then the East and Cohasset Street intersection, the pedestrian-activated crosswalk beacons have been received by the contractor and will be installed in the near future. And then lastly, use of town property permits. The menorah will be displayed on the town common from December 5th through to the holiday. The Shabbat Jewish Center will have a lighting of the menorah ceremony on December 10th at 3:30. On the common is Army-Navy Cheer Squad, December 8th, from 11:00 to 1:00. And the Foxborough J.C.'s will be hosting caroling on the common with the, at the, with the FHS Band on December 21st from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. That's all I've got tonight. I think I'm done.
Should we PR out that Board of Health comments? Have we done a post on that one yet?
Not yet. I was out yesterday, but I'm going to get that up tomorrow.
Yeah, you're going very quickly. I would underscore, right, I zoomed in for the joint planning select board meeting on MBTA Communities. This is a huge deal.
It is.
Across the whole state. Everyone's up in arms about this, you know. So I would encourage people to look at that meeting because it was a real good discussion.
Yep.
A lot of ground was covered. And people will be up to speed because this is going to be coming forward. I was going to ask you if you actually talked to the Patriot group yet about any-
I did.
They did?
I did.
Are they interested, not interested?
Yeah, they're interested in a different area. They want to rezone over by Ashcroft and off North Street, and maybe the terminals.
That wouldn't fit the requirement, though, right?
Um, we could probably make it work, but we just feel that that would be so close to the North Street neighborhood that it would really create an uproar. But I mean, we're, again, we don't want to make this decision. So if folks have different opinions, we kind of said, go to the planning board and make your case. But I think from the, you know, the staff and the Barney level, we kind of brought this forward thinking it has the best chance and the, and the, you know, the least impact on communities, on the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, that neighborhood rallied behind that Washington Street warehouse.
Pretty vociferously.
Yes. That, so that, that was just a warehouse in their backyard. That wasn't this community in their front yard. So just as a side thought.
But it is, you know, open to discussion. You know, no decisions have been made. And certainly, we want to hear from residents if they have different opinions. And, you know, I know the Craft Group might have different thoughts, and they might, they can always put forward their own zoning. You know, they are a landowner. They have the right to bring forward their own zoning as well. So I don't know what's going to happen. Stay tuned for planning board meetings to come.
Okay. Thank you, Paige. Thank you, Dennis. Under Select員's update, just like what Dennis said, going back and reviewing the planning board, Board of, Select Board meeting last week. We also, earlier today at 6:00, had a financial summit. Go back and, you know, check that out if you didn't get a chance to watch that earlier today at 6:00. It was a phenomenal tree lighting up at the common last week. Can't even, oh, we meant to ask chief. I mean, it had to have been over 2,000 people there. Mark Craig Renee with Recreation did a phenomenal job. And I think everybody was, was pleased.
It was amazing. Uptown is just absolutely beautiful right now. It is incredible to see the lights and-
Went to the butcher tonight. It's so nice. We're so lucky.
So lucky.
Yeah. That's all I have. I'm going to defer to Steph about-
Yay! Of course. And listen, there isn't much more to say. I mean, it was all over social media. Everybody knows. But I will tell you, as the wife of a football coach, I don't know if it got any better than, than the other night. And I mean, some of that is that those kids were in the stadium, you know. I mean, way back in the day, they played in the old stadium. But Leah was there. Her daughter's a cheerleader. I, I can't even imagine for those kids, like, just what, what a great experience, you know. And of course, to come out with a win is, is, you know, but um-
Substantial win.
Exactly. And you know what? The, just everything from, you know, near the end of the game, I, I, we were going to try to get Jimmy onto the field, and it was raining stuff. But then we, we, we did get down in the fourth quarter, and man, just, I mean, the kids were going nuts. You know, there was, there was a lot of, I'm not going to mention any names, but there was a lot of, a couple of, I know, kids from the football team, some have lost a parent recently.
Three.
Three. And so there was, you know something? It was just unbelievable. Some of those kids don't get on the field all the time. They were on the field. They were cheering the names. And it, you know what? And these, this entire community, like, you know, from, from the Rodman Center and, you know, and billboards, it just, you know, everybody the next day, everyone was so happy, you know. So anyhow, like I said, I mean, I know most of this has already been talked about all week, but from the Board of Selectmen, congratulations Warriors, you know.
Jack Martinelli, his staff.
Listen, and you know something? I got, I'm just going to say it. I get to talk to Coach yesterday. He called to Dr. Jimmy. And I was just like, I'm like, has it sunk in yet? And he's just like, you know, the coaches are getting together. They're, they're starting to plan to order Super Bowl rings for the kids. I mean, they, kids get Super Bowl rings and everything. So, but like you said, I mean, and, and I re-watched the game on Saturday. We watched all of the games on Saturday. And it just, you know, it's like, we know Coach, we've known, you know, I mean, he was at my wedding 29 years ago, 27 years ago. And, but to listen to some of the announcers, and they're like, Jack Martinelli, 42 years. And I'm like, my, you know, you know, kudos to him, you know, for, for sure. And never mind football. I mean, he was a phys ed teacher up there first. And always, always, the kids always come first. He'll never, he'll never take an ounce of credit for any of it. And, you know, when we did his field dedication, there were letters in the paper. There was, I'll just never forget, there was a woman who had a son with special needs, and he didn't come to school for a couple of days. Do you remember that letter? And Jack called the house. Like, he didn't play, he didn't play football, you know. And, and I don't think he had him in gym class. He just knew, knew the kid. So like I said, he, you know, one of the, one of the best guys I know. And congratulations to him, his coaches, his team. And as good of a football coach as he is, he's a better person.
Yeah, he is.
Anyhow.
Anything else from Select Board? Alrighty. Action items.
All right. So the first one is to motion to approve the November 21st, 2023 Select Board Meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the extended hours request for the Foxborough VFW at 337 Cohasset Street, Bar Louie Tavern and Grill at 232 Patriot Place, Red Robin at 201 Patriot Place, Scorpion Bar at 253 Patriot Place, Six String at 275 Patriot Place, Splitsville at 220 Patriot Place, Axeland Burn at 267 Patriot Place, Saga Hibachi Steakhouse at 295 Patriot Place, Renaissance Hotel and Hilton Garden Inn at 26 Patriot Place, Wormtown Brewery at 250 Patriot Place, E. Helix at 23 Patriot Place, Fat Tuesday at 26 Patriot Place, to open and serve alcohol starting at 10:00 AM on Sunday, December 17th. And again, this connects back to the flex, flex game that's now on Sunday.
This was us being proactive.
Katie being proactive.
I was going to say, after the second, for discussion.
So much to react to quickly with this, with this change in schedule.
Yeah, and to just do it right away, because we knew we would never get enough applicants who wanted to do it on time. And then the after. Okay. Any further discussion? Other than congratulations, Katie. All those in favor?
Aye. All right. Motion to approve, to appoint Michael Hand and Maurice Schuster to the Foxborough Historic District Commission for a term to end May 31st, 2026.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?